Hi Sally, can you hear us?
It says our microphone's muted.
Oh, that would do it. Sorry Sally, just seeing if you can hear us or not.
Hi Taya.
Okay, awesome.
I can hear you loud and clear. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you.
Alrighty, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 24th meeting of the City Council. We wanted to call the meeting to order. Let's start with roll call please. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Ms. Flynn.
Here.
Ms. Shance Hiscott.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Ms. Underhill.
Here.
And Mayor Hardy.
Here.
Thank you Council.
Everyone can join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Do we have a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda, please?
I move to adopt tonight's meeting agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
Snyder on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting agenda is adopted. I don't think we have any proclamations or special presentations tonight, is that right?
We do not.
Okay. Well, let's move on to receipt a public comment. Would you start by summarizing written comments, please?
Yes. In your written comments since the last regular meeting, the Falls Church Climate Action Network sent their input on FY '27. Budget priorities to support energy and climate plans. Nader Baruk of 243 Gundry Drive wrote with concerns and recommendations regarding the Virginia Village Housing Project. Sean Dakin, 410 South Maple Avenue, wrote in favor of banning gas-powered leaf blowers. Dave Gustafson wrote to thank the city for supporting the Falls Church Climate Action Network's first gas lawn tool recycling event. He reported that residents dropped off more than 40 gas lawn tools which were dismantled and recycled by volunteers. Charles Kraus of 127 West Annandale Road wrote about traffic concerns at West Annandale Road and Gundry Drive. Steve Page of 610 Langston Lane asked that City Council consider modifying the stormwater fee structure to include different property types similar to the model Arlington County adopted in 2024. Orhan Shir-Afghan wrote in support of the 2025 Bike Master Plan and pedestrian improvements. And the Village Preservation and Improvement Society wrote in support of increasing tree canopy minimum standards.
Great, thank you. And how about receipt a public comment live or virtually tonight?
Yes, we have one speaker signed up, Mary Lou Pickle. She's ready.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity. I just want to start off by thanking you for all the efforts that you do on behalf of residents. So, it's a lot and we appreciate that. I'm here to share my thoughts so you're aware of what residents are thinking and you can, you know, fold that into your work. I wanted to ask you to for now decline to endorse the Virginia Village Road Map. And that is because we've got agreements in the small area plan already that reflect how to approach that area. With more open space, setbacks, lower density, and this was all in exchange for building the very high-density Harris teeter. So, when we built that very big thing, there were agreements that we would not repeat that, you know. And there's already a small area plan to deal with this. So, I would probably be asking you not to go forward with already talking with developers or issuing an RFP until, and then first have a full and deliberative public engagement process on this so that the residents know and can give input to whatever the plan may be. It sounds like you have a good plan in place, which is the small area plan. So, those are my thoughts. I wanted to share it with you. I hope I'm not coming at the last minute. You know, that there's still time for public input. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
That's the only public comment we did have tonight.
Okay. Let's move on to the report of the City Manager. Mr. Shields.
Well, thank you Mayor Hardy and members of council. Just a few things to report on tonight. In your packet, I did provide a one-year review of the Parking Code Amendment that was enacted by the City Council just about a year ago. And the purpose of that amendment was to provide tenants in some of our older commercial buildings in the city some more flexibility in terms of parking regulations that they would need to comply with. And so, the first 1,200 square feet of tenant space was exempted from parking requirements. And so, council wanted to have an update on how we've administered that code, what the results have been. And in the memo, there's a chart that provides a list of commercial fit-outs where they've received a certificate of occupancy. And it describes what the former code parking requirements would have been and what the revised parking requirements would be. And so, that gives, I think, a good snapshot of a year's worth of activity. I think the conclusion at the end, which I'll repeat here, is that it has been staff's observation that the parking needs for the new businesses listed in the chart above are being adequately met through the combination of onsite parking that already exists in those older commercial buildings and on-street parking, even where the available onsite parking is well below the commercial ratios that are found in the zoning code. We've not been hearing complaints from adjacent property owners that we're aware of. And that's really the summation of our report. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. And maybe I'll pause there before touching base on a few other items.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we do. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for doing this one-year report. I love seeing this and thinking about how the work we've done in public policy actually happens and what the results are. I thought it was fascinating that the one building was from 1870 and that the newest building was 1988. So, these are clearly buildings that we want to have reused in some other form or fashion. My only question for you was, how are we letting people know that this is an opportunity in City of Falls Church? Like, obviously, all of these folks found us. You know, 16% of the applicants found this opportunity. How are we letting people know that or how are we identifying additional areas of opportunity to bring people into the city?
Well, the... I don't know that it is widely promoted, so I can get back with you in terms of what those efforts are. I think that when tenants do come in, it might have actually been sort of the reverse where they would have been surprised to find out that they actually had things that they need to comply with. And so, when they find out that they don't, it's actually kind of not a surprise to them. It really was just a negative surprise in the past. That's a broad comment, but I think that's...
I do think it would be interesting if we were, you know, advertising, if we took assessments of how many other underutilized buildings or parts of buildings that we had and see if that's the reason why people haven't brought their businesses to City of Falls Church and see if this makes a difference. I'd love to see that maybe in next year's report.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a similar suggestion where if... I know our retail and our commercial vacancy, it's actually quite low. I want to say it's like 5% or 8%, which is like probably one of the lowest in the region. So, we don't have that much commercial space, but I do think that it'd be helpful to target. Like, if we know that this is a chronically vacant or is really challenging to fill it because of parking requirements or other reasons, it'd be nice to be able to target those opportunities if this is a hindrance to it. Ms. Flynn?
I just had one, I guess it would be one follow-up question or request as to this. And that's where the parking went from some parking to zero parking requirement. And I would just ask staff follow-up on like whether that had any adverse effect on disability parking. Because my understanding is that if you, where you don't have a parking requirement, you may not have to provide disability parking, but if you do have to provide a space, that first space may need to be a disability space. And so, what this means for, like, the spaces that we lost parking or have no parking requirement, are there still accessible spaces, like in the remaining parts of the lot or in the street parking where we now don't have spaces? So, just to, yeah, to be cognizant of the effect on accessible parking in particular. Thanks.
Other questions? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. Wyatt, this is a request. Could you give me the addresses of each of the businesses? Because it's really helpful for us to understand whether this is a business that may be located in a building where there are other spaces otherwise provided. And I can imagine some of these are in that circumstance. So, it really helps us understand this. Now, is this all the small businesses in the city or is this a selected survey or sample or what are we looking at?
So, what the chart is, is people have come in for a certificate of occupancy over the past year. And so, certainly not all businesses nor is it a survey. It's just who walked in the door asking for a certificate of occupancy.
So, some but not all. And again, it would be really helpful to have the addresses to really understand. For example, if you're a business located on the ground floor of an apartment building that otherwise provides spaces, then that would be helpful to know the exact circumstances so that we can totally understand this. So, I'm asking for the addresses of each of those businesses so that I can better understand. And also, what's the on-street parking conditions and whether there really were any complaints from that immediate area. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Underhill?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Again, thank you for this. This is something that we asked for and this is a great follow-up to actually seeing this data. I think I'm always surprised, you know, when I see, I think one of the top things was a 1964 building that was, had 900 square feet of space and required 27 parking spaces. And so, Beauty Salon would not have been able to open up in Falls Church in that old location without having to somehow provide an insane number of parking spaces. So, I'm glad that we're able to breathe new life and new business into some of these older buildings. And so, what I would imagine from some of this though is like some of these older buildings actually do have parking. So, I guess the zero might be a little bit misleading, which is like they're not required to add any more parking, but they still provide parking alongside them. So, it might be nice to see that number, but again, that's like more data to collect. But this so far is fantastic to see and I'm glad, as Ms. Hiscott mentioned, to see some of the things that we enacted earlier actually come to fruition. So, thank you.
Okay.
And I do want to just note, virtually every one of these businesses does have off-street parking. They have onsite parking as part of their building. And I do want to make that clear. The chart doesn't sort of tell that full story, partly because, you know, I don't think we had that data readily at hand. But as a general comment, that's an accurate comment.
Thank you. One other thing I just wanted to add to, in the interest of data, it'd be interesting to know if those were the parking requirements, how many they actually built out. Like, if the requirement was zero and they decided like, hey, nobody's going to be able to come to our business because we don't have enough parking spots, that maybe the requirement was zero, but maybe they ended up building four. Or, you know, it'd just be interesting data to have as well to know if those requirements were being met exactly or if they were just part of a larger business strategy for those moving in. Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of thoughts. I think I'll echo Ms. Underhill and Ms. Hiscott's comments. It is really nice, if I count it correctly, I think it's 23 small businesses in this list that are able to open, which is amazing that we were able to facilitate that. And also, obviously, preservation of older buildings, which we've talked about because not everything needs to be redeveloped and giving new life and new uses in those buildings. In light of, I think, the discussion we had last week about how parking is often a site plan modification, I guess I'm looking for what's the next step based on this? Is there a staff recommendation of, because I know we debated, is it 1,000 square feet? Is it 1,200? The Planning Commission even recommended 1,500 square feet. Given this data, given that we haven't had complaints and issues of parking, because again, all the data shows that we have more than enough parking and we build it all over the city, you know, should we expand beyond 1,200 square feet? Should we think about revising our parking, you know, in other uses besides commercial? Because I think this is really positive development in light of the fact that we have data now a year later that clearly the sky didn't fall. So, I guess that's more of a question to staff, is what's next?
Well, I think what's next is we will be looking at our commercial parking requirements in the, sort of, the beginning part of next year. And it's in the context of the site plan approval and site plan and subdivision designated agent ordinance that's going to come back to the council for second reading and final consideration on December 8th. It has been the practice that the Planning Commission approves on a fairly routine basis, parking modifications for commercial site plans. And so, now that shifts in that ordinance to the designated agent. It is a fact that under state authorities, really, that type of an action is not supposed to be taken by the Planning Commission to grant a modification. And so, that practice is something we needed to change anyway. As a short-term measure, we're going to continue that practice just as a, like a six-month process where the designated agent will still have some room to make those modifications in consultation with the Planning Commission, because that's the way that will work. But our big task is to take a look at our parking requirements and see if we can't update those so that these, this need for parking modifications is not routine. It's rare. And so, I think that would be the big effort. And I think some of the comments you made about, you know, about sort of this approach might be part of that strategy on how to address commercial parking requirements in the city. I don't want to sort of pre-guess what, you know, direction that will take, but I think it might be one of the solutions.
I guess something for the council to consider when we meet in January is actually residential parking requirements as well. I think every time we have a special exception, we often reduce the parking requirements there. And I know that we had data from several years ago where we actually went to every mixed-use building and did parking utilization counts. And we were usually below or at around one space per unit. And so, it's worth also thinking about whether we want to revise residential parking requirements, if not, get rid of them altogether.
That's a really relevant point as well. And I think that needs to be part of the...
I mean, another data point is parking is about $60,000 per space. And so, if we want to reduce the cost of housing, parking is clearly a place to do that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure we proceed on accurate data. And the data that I've asked for is fundamental because the reality is that some of those businesses may actually need those spaces, but they're otherwise provided by the building that they're in. And that argues for a flexible approach. If you have a situation where, for example, you have X number of parking spaces for residential in a mixed-use building and the business is able to use those spaces during the day when they're not being used by residential, then it makes sense to grant the modification. But I want to be very careful we don't leap onto this without more, without more clear data about what this is really showing.
Any other final comments? Yeah, Ms. Connolly?
This isn't even about the chart. This is about the description of the chart, which is that we received a total of 146 applications for occupancy permits. Which I have no idea how that compares to other years, which would also be interesting to know, but that's a lot. That's good. I'm glad to see that we have 146 people wanting to open businesses in Falls Church.
And every one of those represents someone pursuing a dream in the City of Falls Church. And it's, I think it's a great part of what the city does, is to help make that happen.
Do you have other things in your manifesto, Mr. Shields?
Just a few things to touch base on. We are entering into holiday season. And a few things I just want to bring the community's attention to. There is a recently updated restaurant guide that provides information about 100 or 150 wonderful restaurants in the city. And I so encourage people to go to the city website to take a look at that. We also have a whole host of great events coming up, including the Winter Wonderland and the Little City, which is on Tuesday, December 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Market Square at Founder's Row. You can get more information about that. The Santa Mobile, sponsored by the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department, will be making its rounds across the city from December 5th through December 14th. We have the annual Holiday Gift and Craft Show and Children's Shop. That is on Saturday, December 6th and Sunday, December 7th at the Community Center. That's an annual event and always a great place to go for shopping for gifts. So, those are just a few of the highlights on things that are on the city's website. It is also the season for giving. And I think Councilmember Mary Beth Connolly might be providing an update for the community tonight on Better Together Campaign, which the city is participating in to share information about how people can support community members in need and experiencing food insecurity. And so, I know the City Council's been a very strong supporter of that and provided additional funding for our area food banks and food pantries in the recent budget amendment. But also, there is the Toys for Tots, which the City Police Department sponsors every year. And so, if you look around city buildings, you'll see places where people can drop off toys and those are distributed to families throughout the region. And so, I encourage people to look out on the city communications for those opportunities to give as well. And then the last thing is, as we go into Thanksgiving week, I just say every Thanksgiving, I'm always very thankful for the wonderful community that I get to work in, the colleagues that I get to work with, for the great leadership of the City Council. And so, those are the, some of the things that I'm always grateful for at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. The feeling is mutual. Questions from Mr. Shields and/or council requests. Let's start this way, Ms. Downs.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Shields. I'm thankful for having such a great city manager. We, I did have a question. We had a speaker this evening about Virginia Village and we received a letter. Do you anticipate...
Do you anticipate doing some sort of, not trying to put you on the spot, but maybe when the time is right, doing some sort of town hall or something like that?
I do anticipate doing that. We don't have a date set for that, and I think it would be in the new year. There is still some work we're doing, just to kind of review, kind of, all the existing plans, and also, sort of, touch base with nonprofit partners, just to assess, is this sort of viable in terms of going forward at the present time, before we launch a big public communications campaign on it? So, we'll do some of that assessment. But, public communications is very much at the front of our to-do list, to bring the community up to speed on the roadmap. And I do want to just assure community members that the, kind of, the first work will be to take a look at city policy, our small-area plans, the future land use map, the comprehensive plan, and what they say about this part of the city. And we do think, staff believes, staff recommends, that it would be appropriate to update that, and to get fresh community input on that, and that the city council would be ultimately the decider of any policy updates with respect to future land use in that area. But that is a very, you know, that is a community-based activity, and so, we look forward to those next steps.
That's great. And it makes sense. You don't want to have a town hall before you have, and not be able to answer a lot of the questions. So, I think that's right. Do your due diligence, and then, when you feel ready, you know, to have that. I think that, well, you know, I attended, when we did those town halls for the accessory dwelling units, I attended all of those, and I thought it was really interesting. You know, the first one, people had lots of questions, and, you know, a lot of apprehension. And I noticed with each one, as the staff sort of took things, and the city council were listening, you know, each one, people were beginning to feel more comfortable with the concept and all that. So, I thought, I thought that was a great example of how town halls really, really helped with, with an issue that was, you know, front and center in our community. And then, the only other question I had is, we also received a public comment about stormwater fee structure, and this resident was, wanted to talk about, suggested that we should look at how Arlington has structured theirs. So, I didn't know if that's something we could, either we could get an update from you via email, or if it's a work session topic, or what have you. I'd just like to learn more about that.
Yeah, we, I read that letter. It was interesting. I think we would probably want to take a look at that as well. And I would like to take the opportunity, though, also, to note some of the virtues of the city's system. It is, I think, the fairest way to do it. It is based on impervious surface, and so, it kind of makes the same standard for everybody. And it is the impervious surfaces that drive the need for public investment in our stormwater system. So, I think there's a very strong policy basis behind the city's system. So, I'd want to make that note, even as we might look at opportunities to make it even better.
Right. Thank you. And that was sort of along the lines I was thinking, too, is I thought that we do a good job here basing it on impervious surface. But again, I just wanted to, you know, maybe it's just an email from the staff giving us a little bit more background, but yeah, it's, it's not to question the way we do it, but just, I was curious. This is the first I'd heard of something like that. Thank you.
Can I chime in here? Because I went down that rabbit hole of researching how Arlington came up with their stormwater utility fee. They have this weird ERU kind of unit, which kind of, this is combination of using impervious surface with tiers based on how many units there are and types of housing. I think if ours is actually based on impervious surface using GIS data, ours is probably going to be more granular than Arlington's. And so, the tiering system plus the ERUs in Arlington is supposed to approximate that. But, Mr. Shields, if you tell us that we're using actual impervious surface in our calculations, that seems to be the fairest. So, anyway, just thought I'd share, because I read way more about Arlington's model than I planned to. Ms. Flynn?
Yeah, so, I was gonna, I, oh, plus one, Ms. Downs, on the, just the request for Virginia Village, that it's clear what's going on, and that the community engagement process is also clear, and provides input and transparency into whatever is happening with the RFP process. And again, I think just as staff digs into it, and digs into the materials, and considers the extent to which there may be updates or reconciling things that, you know, they, we as a city internalize, you know, the conversations that are going to need to take place, and decouple the community engagement from the RFP process, until we're actually at a point where we feel as though enough people understand what's going on, that we truly can, like, move forward with an RFP process, so that there's trust in, sort of, how this comes together, and community engagement, and also commitment, right, to the overall success of the project as we move forward. So, that, and then, since we started on stormwater, I'll just re-up the request that we'll look at the stormwater fee credit program, because that may also be a place that, you know, regardless of what we're doing with our calculations, that we're doing so in a way that is actually promoting greener infrastructure in a more sustainable way, especially as we see those nutrient credit purchases pop up every year. And then, the last thing, again, just thank you to the city manager's office, city clerk's office, and city attorney's office, and all staff for your engagement and work throughout the year. So, thanks.
I think Erin summed that up pretty well. I think we can, and spoke for all of us, in extending our thanks to everyone who works for the city. I'm tagging on to the stormwater, but in a little bit different way. There was a letter from Falls Church Climate Action Network that outlined how far behind we are on our GOEP and our SEEP plans. And I'll be rolling off the ESC, and I'll be rolling off the budget decisions, and I want to just make a very strong plug, and ask that everybody on council spends time reviewing that letter, because it summarizes, really, at a high level, what we need to do to get back on track. And there are some great expertise in our community members who are part of that. So, if anybody has questions, I know they'd be happy to answer questions along the way. So, this is my plug to continue to work on that, and work towards those goals that we spent, you know, several, many years putting together and developing for a reason. And like having this public policy discussion on parking a year later, I hope that we can have public policy discussions on how well we can do some of the things we've outlined in our, in our two plans. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council request, Ms. Connolly?
I'll pick up our, Mr. Shields mentioned the Better Together Food Program, and I just want to share with the community, this is something that is, was launched yesterday, and will continue to be launched for the next month or so. Wearing my City of Falls Church Public School employee hat, I started working this summer with school staff, also, general government staff in the HHS department, as well as our local food pantry, the Falls Church Community Services Council, and a lot of local pastors to come up with a problem. And the challenge was that Falls Church City Public Schools had been providing weekend food for about 30 students for about 10 years. There are families of 30 students for about 10 years, and the last year, that number increased to more than 100 students, more than 100 families. And it became unsustainable for the school division to continue doing this. So, the outreach was to those other organizations to say, how can you help? How can we do this as a community? Make sure that everyone has the food that they need on the weekends. So, it's a four-point program. It's going to be called Better Together Falls Church. If you remember during the pandemic, there were those Falls Church t-shirts that said "Better Together." So, we brought back that logo, and I'm working with some of the same people who started that one. And we were asking for four things. And one is to donate funds to the Falls Church Education Foundation Family Assistance Fund. All the funds that go there are 100% passed through to students and families. And they have already spent $60,000 in the last month to help families, about 280 families, who were either having trouble because of the furlough, or because of, like, a snap or other issues. We're also asking people to donate food or funds to the Falls Church Community Services Council Food Pantry. And council allocated $8,000 there last month, or earlier this month. They also need volunteers at that food pantry, so if anybody wants to volunteer. And then, the third thing is new, and that is, we're going to start and adopt a family program in January, and that is going to be an opportunity for churches and other organizations to say they would like to provide food for families. And we're going to try a pilot starting in January, and hopefully be able to take that through the whole school year, and be able to match up families with people who are able to provide food or gift cards for them. And then, the fourth thing is to buy a Better Together t-shirt. If you're, if you have the one from 2020, it's probably a little faded. You might want a fresh one. So, those, those are available as well. So, I presented this yesterday at a joint Thanksgiving service of church members, and it'll be out. Mr. Benton said he would run something in the news press, and it's been a really good partnership between school staff and general government staff. Ms. Hiscott, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for pulling this all together, and I wanted to give you credit, but also publicly acknowledge Suzanne Hlacki and Adina Williams, whose idea was Better Together back in COVID, and the original intent was to support our small businesses and our restaurants. If you recall, the proceeds from the original Better Together t-shirts went to gift cards at, supporting our local businesses. And in turn, then, when the businesses were doing well, it morphed into supporting the Family Assistance Fund. And 100% of all funds raised go, are passed through to the families. So, not, the Ed Foundation absorbs all operating costs for that. So, just want to give credit to Mary Beth for pulling all these folks together, and for Suzanne and Adina for having the original ideas.
And for Debbie Hiscott for inventing the Family Assistance Fund, as part of the Falls Church Education Foundation. So, this is something new, and a great way for the community to work together. And then, I have one other question, and that is just about the GOEP and SEEP. There was a great article in the New York Times yesterday about roundabouts, and it was about a town who had Keene, New Hampshire, has started to put in roundabouts, and what they are noticing is that their air quality is improving greatly. So, I don't know if that's in the Community Energy Action Plan, but maybe it needs to be, is how roundabouts are reducing air pollution.
And maybe... It's reducing it because you don't stop and you don't idle.
You don't stop and go, exactly.
Those, so, it's discussed. I don't know that it's specifically stated, let's build more roundabouts, but it's discussed in, in the context of reducing greenhouse gas.
Right, right.
And emissions.
Yes. And then, my third thing is, in response to what Ms. Pickle said, and related to Virginia Village, you mentioned, and Mr. Snyder was the only one on the city council at the time when that was approved, that when the 301 West Broad building went up, working with the neighborhood, there were conversations about ensuring that there was more green space that would be there in exchange for agreeing to Harris Teeter. I don't know what those commitments were, but maybe Mr. Snyder remembers, or maybe it's in staff reports, or maybe people in the community remember, but I think we need to make sure that's part of that community engagement process. What were the promises, the guarantees, the expectations of people in that community about the green space? Because that was really, today was the first time I heard that specifically, and I think that's important to remember.
Great. Thank you for your leadership on the food work, and all the kudos. Other council requests? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. A couple things. I want to focus again on Virginia Village. It's unfortunate that the kickoff for that very important action will be right in the middle of the holiday season, and with very little notice to the public in general. And I really believe that more time ought to be provided before we take an initial step like that on a project that's important. And it also points to a general issue of, of, and we've been running this for a couple meetings, too many important action items that are happening late at night, which, never mind, it challenges us, but it challenges citizens and their ability to follow and meaningfully interact. So, I really think we need to revise the number of action items that we're putting on each agenda. And on December 8th is a classic example. I can't imagine we'll get through that before midnight, if not later, considering the importance of a number of those issues, each one of which deserves a lot of community input. I want to reiterate my concern with the Virginia Village plan as laid out. Other than vague promises, I'm not seeing the kind of guarantees of city invol, of citizen involvement that we ought to have, particularly the local area, they are closest to the area, but citywide. So, I just want to express that concern. And my fear is that the MOU is going to set things in place that really should receive much more public commentary than they're going to be able to receive on December 8th for a variety of reasons. So, those are a couple of the issues. But, the December 8th agenda is a classic example of too many action items on one agenda at one time. And I do think we need to change an overall approach that we're, that we're following with regard to that. The, I think that's, that's it. The specific concern with regard to Virginia Village, and the more systematic concern that I hope we can change how we do things in the future, to make it more possible for critical items, which there clearly would be broad, widespread public interest, be able to have those items earlier in a meeting than is occurring recently. Finally, a big thank you to all the citizens, and I don't know if I really said it at the last meeting, but all of our citizens who participated in the recent elections, everyone who ran. I think Falls Church proved, again, that you don't need to take out a second mortgage in order to run for office, important office here in the city of Falls Church. And we really are a unique place, and my hope is that we preserve that ability of folks to run for our public office without, without huge expenditures. And we had a classic example of that in our last election. Thank you to everyone who voted. Thank you to everyone who, who participated in any way in this most recent election, including our very competent election board, and the hope that we can clear up some of the voting location issues that we had this time around, in terms of parking and other matters. So, those were a couple of the issues that I wanted to present tonight. And finally, I don't often talk about international issues, but we've obviously reached a critical point in the, the future of Ukraine, and I hope that officials with the capability of influencing that decision will protect the long-term independence and freedom of the Ukrainian people. Thank you.
Other council requests? Okay, before we get to mine, Mr. Shields, can you just clarify for December 8th, the Virginia Village item, it's not really kickoff of the process, but what is intended in the MOU? Is it the draft that we discussed last week? I know that we asked for some clarification in preamble language, ensure that there was going to be ample community-based engagement to come, but could we clarify what's planned for December 8th, so people don't expect a major kickoff of a process?
So, the, the EDA MOU is really sort of a, just goes into the details of the fact that the properties in Virginia Village, nine of the quadplexes of the 20 are owned by the Economic Development Authority. And so, the MOU just spells out some things, like, the EDA cannot, cannot sell them without the city council's permission. The EDA can't attach any liens to these properties without the city council's permission. The main sort of thrust of the MOU is to keep the city council as the policy driver of Virginia Village, that none of that's being outsourced or delegated to the EDA. So, I think that's a crucial point of the MOU. And then, it lays out some other things about how the rent proceeds are used to maintain the properties, what the rent proceeds can be used for, what they cannot be used for. So, those are the types of things that are covered in the MOU. I would say that this is a very separate discussion than the larger discussion about the roadmap for the future of Virginia Village. That is something that will be driven by the city council with your boards and commissions, the planning commission, and other city, you know, offices like that. And it will be a very open and public process that I think will stretch, you know, it's going to take, in the roadmap, it, there is ample time to provide it for that community input and to set policy for Virginia Village. It does stand for, the roadmap does stand for, starting with the public engagement, and getting sort of a picture of what the future vision is for Virginia Village. And then, at that point, then, consider the RFP to bring a nonprofit partner, or a coalition of a nonprofit, and a for-profit partner in, so that before that vision is finalized, there's a chance to sort of oxygenate it with what a nonprofit partner would be able to do. The reason we suggest doing it that way is, if you do sort of then make decisions on the land use policy before you've engaged with the future development community, that could, if they're just practical things that a nonprofit partner, or any other partner can't do, that, that sort of prompts very, sometimes, a difficult circling back with the community to say, we need to change what we prior... to say, we need to change what we prior agreed to. So we're trying to avoid that, start with the community, and then bring in other partners, and then with the community, then finalize what the policies would be that would govern the future of that site.
Thank you for clarifying. It sounds like, and I'm going to use your words, city council is both the policy driver but also the process driver for anything that happens at Virginia Village. Next week's meeting on December, or the meeting happening two weeks in December 8 is really the MOU with the EDA kind of as our silent owner for the properties and not actually a kickoff of the process.
That's right.
So hopefully that allays concerns. Also happy to talk about shortening our meetings. I know that we've all, as a council, decided we want to try to get to three meetings a month, which by nature means we only have one regular meeting per month, but if we would like to get back to two meetings per month, we can certainly discuss that in January when we all get together for retreats. I do have some council requests, though, getting back to those. I went by actually Ann and Ellen Gundry the past several days, and I do see that the new striping is done, so thank you for. It was as of 6 o'clock tonight?
No, there's like a half a.
It was half a crosswalk this morning, and the other half was done this afternoon.
Oh, when I drove by this afternoon, it was not done, so it must have been done after that.
Around like 5:30 it was when I did my run in the dark. So someone finished the crosswalk, which is great, so thank you for that. Assuming there aren't final details, though, with the striping, I guess the question I would have, as well as both Ann and Ellen Gundry, but also Meridian with the new lighting, turning on the new lights at West Falls Station Boulevard that I think was meant to throttle some of the traffic going into the secondary schools. A broader question is, how are we monitoring whether that's effective? Because I know that we obviously got lots of public comment and complaints about the dangers of those two areas of town. I would like to make sure we are not just relying on complaints, but if there's some sort of like engineer assessment after the fact on whether things are working as we intended.
So we are continuing to keep an eye on that, the sort of the traffic flow and all the issues on how people get to and from the campus, whether it's by vehicle, by foot, by bicycle. And so that's a regular thing that city staff are doing, to go up and observe it, sort of experience it on a regular basis, and to stay in very close touch with the school administration so that if they're hearing complaints, we hear about it. Since the new Chestnut Signal was operational, the traffic flow in and out of Mary Ellen Henderson, our observation is that it works much better. And so we're going to continue to monitor it, but we think that was an improvement, but we'll continue to keep an eye on it.
Okay. And then likewise for the Go, Eep and Seep, I know that we get regular reports from FC Can on how we're doing, but I think in light of, I think, the positive results that we're seeing from commercial parking, I would like, it'd be great to extend the same kind of monitoring and progress monitoring of every policy or big adoption of work that we do. Like, I don't want policies to be passed by us and then to sit on a shelf. So I think as we think about what we've got coming up in the new year, it's not only new stuff, but let's make sure we revisit the old stuff and see how we're doing and track against those. So that's kind of a broader request. My third one has to do with Route 29. I received two comments about it offline, one about the bus stop work, which I think is a CIP project in the out years. I don't think we're quite even at 30% plans for that, but I know Fairfax County is undergoing a Route 29 study, and I wanted to know if or how, or can we make those two projects sync up to make sure that whatever improvements are planned by Fairfax County are aligned with our bus stop work. Sidewalk work does not seem to be in scope for anybody, and so I don't know whether, again, that could be something we change our scope on, or whether Fairfax County's project can include sidewalk improvements on both sides. But I do know that we have a lot of pedestrian traffic that cross both ways, and it's probably benefits us mostly to have more residents be able to cross 29 safely and get to a lot of the commercial activity we have in Falls Church. So that's a broader request, I guess, to ensure that our CIP project is synced up with Fairfax County work. And should we need extra funding to work on sidewalks, that would be a nice thing to add to scope.
Okay. I'll take this back, and I would certainly agree with the principle, they need to be synced up, but we'll talk about the mechanics of how that's actually happening.
Great. Okay. Final council requests? Okay. Thank you all for the good discussion. Let's move on to business on the agenda.
Yes, and we have no second readings of ordinances or other items requiring public hearings this evening. We do have resolutions and first readings of ordinances, and the first one is TO 25-21, Ordinance to amend the City Code of the City of Falls Church, Chapter 48, zoning, Article 1 in general, amending the half-story definition, and Article 5 supplementary regulations, Division 6, height, lot, and yard regulations, deleting Section 48-1104, conditional uses permitted by special use permit as an obsolete section, and Division 9, antennas, clarifying regulations applying for all antenna types.
All right. So this ordinance is before council for first reading tonight, and the request is to grant first reading and schedule a public hearing at your regular meeting on January 26. The three amendments to the zoning ordinance are, from staff's perspective, technical cleanups that are generally don't have any significant policy implications. It's just kind of part of our general housekeeping to remove obsolete language or increase clarity as we go through and administer the code on a regular basis. And so in the title, we reference the three areas that we're recommending that we have these amendments. And I would actually refer council, I think they're probably the clearest way to see what we're doing, is if you go down to the ordinance itself and see the dark blue underlined text, that's the new additions, and the red strikeout is the things that we would propose to be removed. And so as the staff report notes, the antenna definition, we're just recommending that be updated and modernized because it referred so specifically to TV antennas, and the world has changed a little bit, so we're recommending an update to that definition. The half-story at line 165 in the ordinance, this is a really important definition, what that, you know, two and a half stories is the limit for height in our single-family home districts, and so that half story definition is referred to and used on almost every house that's built in the city. But we would recommend deleting the sentence that's, the clause of that paragraph that says, "Provided that any such story uses a separate dwelling unit other than by a janitor or other employee of his family shall be counted as a full story." That's been superseded by the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was adopted earlier this year, and also, so we would recommend that that be deleted from the zoning ordinance. And then the last is kind of a technical matter relating to conditional use permits and special use permits. And with that, I'll stop and be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Questions or comments? Otherwise, is there a motion?
Move to grant first reading to TO 25-21, refer to the planning commission, schedule second reading and public hearing for January 26, 2026, and advertise the same according to law.
Second? Second. Downs on the second? Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Shields, thank you for also talking about the two and a half story. I know that there's been a lot of social media news about neighboring Fairfax County and an addition that was three stories tall, and so it's worth clarifying that we do have a two and a half story limit in Falls Church while also being 35 feet is the residential height limit.
That's right.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Yes, we have TR 25-38, Resolution to amend Resolution 2023-24 and Resolution 2024-19 to approve the FY 2023, FY 2024, and FY 2025 Federal Housing and Urban Development, HUD Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, annual subaward agreements with Fairfax County, and grant subrecipient agreement with the Falls Church Housing Corporation, Virginia Community Development Corporation.
So each year, the city receives an allocation of CDBG and home funding. These are two federal programs in support of housing that the city gets through Fairfax County. The amount is about $71,000 per year, kind of on average. By prior action, the city council had allocated prior years to, in support of the Virginia Village project in partnership with Wesley Housing. When Wesley Housing pulled out of that program, those dollars have sort of waited to be reallocated. And so what's before council is a request that those dollars be reallocated to the Falls Church Housing Corporation for improvements at Winter Hill. And so that would take care of the 2023, 2024, and 2025 allocations, and then FY 26 will be determined as a separate action in the future. We do think that Virginia Village ultimately is possibly a good use of these funds in the future, but that'll be a decision for the future.
Vice Mayor?
And I might have missed this in the staff report, so I apologize if I did, but that not, we don't have anything proposed for 2026 because of the federal, because of reviewing the federal program itself, not because of any actions we have or haven't taken.
That's right.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Otherwise, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of TR 25-38.
Is there a second? Ms. Flynn on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Let's move on to item three, the Ledge Program.
Yes, we have TR 25-41, Resolution adopting the City of Falls Church 2026 Legislative Program.
And for this, we'll turn it over to Cindy Mester, who is the author of the Ledge Program with a lot of input from the city council members and the legislative committee, and I'll turn it over to Cindy for a report on it.
Thank you, Mr. Shields, mayor and city council. What I'd like to do this evening is highlight some changes to the Ledge Program and follow-up conversations I had with Senator Salim and Delegate Simon since the work session last Monday. The majority of those items are highlighted in gray within the staff report in the Ledge Program. I just want to call out a few of the more major changes, and then certainly be glad to answer any questions. The request that's before council this evening is to move to approve this Resolution 25-41. So starting at line 38, these were some of the new concepts that we discussed at work session and council provided direction and feedbacks. I want to highlight on a few outcomes of those and identify where in the Ledge Program those changes are reflected. So starting with the discussion on split tax rate, which then led to more of a broader conversation on flexibility, on taxing authority that would allow for affordability and flexibility. At line 137, you'll see in the Ledge Program, and that's attachment one behind the staff report, line 137. This has been rewritten to capture the conversation with council during the work session to allow for some more flexibility and to look at what legally can be done through state code changes and legal authority constitutionally and so forth. And so in working with Delegate Simon's office, their recommendation is that the council, the city, would request a study to be considered either through the Virginia Housing Commission or J-Larke. They need to do a little bit more strategic work and follow up as to sort of what would be that mechanism, but they supported the broader concept of a study and then recommending, listing some options but not precluding that. So that's how you see that written now in the legislative program. That conversation was specifically with Delegate Simon's chief of staff, and they're looking at how to do that, given his leadership role in some of the policy committees. On the parking threshold authority, and this has been refined and updated following a conversation with Senator Salim this past Wednesday, you'll find those changes on line 125. It was a productive conversation with the senator in terms of what was his desired outcome and goals, and then how could we collaborate to assist with that and provide flexibility and collaboration, but also make sure we don't have unintended consequences with parking that might spill over into neighborhoods and so forth. And so the conversation had already been evolving, and he was appreciative of the initial outreach ideas that I sent, and he is looking at some possible exclusions that might carve out smaller localities that are already built out and acknowledging the one-size won't fit all, or possibly looking at localities that have updated their parking code, similar to your conversation just a few moments ago on commercial and residential, but extending the effective date, so there's more time to accomplish it versus September of next year. Also was appreciative of some of the conversations we've been having around shared parking agreements, where we might partner with business around us for like Farmer's Market, or looking at how our smart city technology can be used with parking to facilitate public and private partnerships. Also, for examples, like where the city have shared parking with Kaiser. So more to come. It's still in drafting, it's still evolving, but he was very open to that conversation and indicated he would follow up when he had another draft language as it evolves through the state general assembly drafting process. And so the position that's written at line 133 is my recommendation based on the council work session discussion and the conversation with the senator to continue to work collaboratively to refine the legislation intended to increase accessible and affordable housing while mitigating impacts on built-out neighborhoods. So that's the recommendation that I put in your Ledge Program for consideration this evening. I will note that VML is looking at this, and many of the Northern Virginia localities that I'm hearing from have concerns, and so I think it will be definitely a regional and statewide conversation. As part of that conversation, we did have a good conversation on the broader affordability and accessibility of housing, and I think there are several other bills, and I know with the mayor's involvement in the transition team with our governor-elect, affordable housing will be a topic, and I think there's some broader discussions on how can the comp plan and other collaborative partnerships and toolboxes be created to facilitate that. And part of the conversation on the parking specific led to maybe that would just be something in the toolbox in a bigger picture than a standalone mandated bill. Much to evolve yet, but I felt like it was a very positive collaborative conversation, so I wanted to report out that this evening. Going back to the staff report at line 45, we noted the discussion on tree canopy, and that is reflected in the Ledge Programs at line 666 and 720, working with both the center and the delegate about possibly initiating a bill specific to that. So more to come to that, but the Ledge Program does support pursuing that, and I've added specific language at line 639 for the public safety fines. So flag those few things that we discussed at the work session. Also wanted to note that did capture the prioritization list that council identified at the work session as seven items, starting at line 55. We had sort of listed out eight during the meeting, but I combined accessible housing, accessible and affordable housing and tenant rights, because a lot of it overlapped conceptually. And I do have line items if there's any there that you want to specifically look at, but we have covered all of those topics throughout the legislative program. The council did ask to see those sort of as an executive summary or an easy way to capture within the Ledge Program, so you'll see at line five in the actual Ledge Program, attachment one, a at-a-glance priorities, and so you can see the federal-state really quick, and then it flows into more details throughout. So I appreciated that recommendation. Did want to note- Did want to note that the school board's draft legislative program is now attached in your Ledge Program, is attachment eight. When I was following up with the superintendent, there was some technical difficulties at the November 18th meeting, so the school board didn't actually review their Ledge Program, so it'll be adopted at their next program. But based on the work with the school board and the Legislative Committee, no, there's no concerns that there'll be a major change to the draft that's before you. If anything does change, I will certainly update council. I also wanted to note a follow-up on one of the recommendations, and this I've highlighted at line 91 on the staff report. The ESC had recommended considering changing the building code to permit single-stair dwellings to facilitate affordable housing. That was in their recommendation. That was an item that council discussed last year and was in your Ledge Program. And following up with some information that Mayor Hardy had heard about in her work with some other delegates, I did find out from VML and DHCD that that language has actually been recommended to be adopted on December 11. So it's gone through the whole building code review stakeholder group and is going for final stakeholder vote on December 11. The effective date will be 2027. And in reviewing what's being recommended with our city building official, it has been amended quite a bit to ensure sort of the safety concerns that a single stair would have in terms of the distance of the stairwell to the units, the width of the units, what can and can't be in the stairwell. And so while it certainly will still need to be monitored, seems like a good balance has come out for safety as well as trying to reduce the cost of producing. So I wanted to note that I basically have noted that that's being passed, so while we'll endorse the ESC recommendations, the whole, that one piece is moot, because it's already progressed through the process. And I think those were the highlights that I wanted to cover, and certainly glad to answer any questions, receive additional comments or refinements as we formally kick off the process and adopt the Ledge Program this evening.
Great. Thank you for being responsive to the discussion last week. Ms. Downs.
Thank you so much. And to echo the mayor's comments, we appreciate you. You know, I know I was on West Coast Time last week, but still it was, I could only imagine it was a late night, so thank you for listening to all of our feedback. So just a couple of things, and some of these questions are because I'm still new to this piece. In terms of the positions on your, and this is, Ms. Mester, you did, I mean, this document is so comprehensive, so thank you for all of your work on it. In terms of the positions, I noticed that, you know, we just, I wasn't sure, are they in any specific order? I see the new ones are listed first. I just didn't know if they, if there was any sort of order to, it's a lot, obviously it's a very comprehensive document, and I didn't know if there were things that should, quote unquote, rise to the top, that might be more priorities, or how that's organized under positions.
Sure. I guess two sort of responses to that. Everything that's in here, myself and our interns will track and pay attention to them and see what bills follow. So in some ways, it doesn't change what we're going to track and monitor, because all of these are issues that council has adopted, and the positions are written broadly, because we don't know what those bills are, so we can see what fits or not, and then can work with the Ledge Committee if there's any questions on whether council would support, oppose, or be neutral.
Okay, but is-
But that said, the priorities were where staff may put extra time. So looking at attachment one at line five, this is the actual Ledge Program, the at-glance priorities. A key focus of area will be those seven, which are in ABC order. So the affordable housing, the environmental, public safety, social net, WAMADA funding, that'll be the things that if we need to do testify, additional research, sort of, they're the top of the priorities that will draw the staff attention.
Okay. So I guess another question is, do we, do we give this packet to Senator Salim and Delegate Simon?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Well, after the city clerk has an opportunity to finish out the full resolution, and I take out all the great changes, that will go to them. They already seen the drafts, and so they'll get the official adopted, and then we'll continue to work with them, for example, on the parking, on the 20%, on the tax study. So there'll be some key things for sure, but we'll see the whole picture.
All right. And I do appreciate you highlighting those priorities, because as I said, sort of an executive summary, sort of, you just say these are really our things that we're very passionate about. So this is just another, because I'm still new, question. So some of these, like, so if I'm looking at line 266 about the state budget, and in parentheses, you have consistent regionally, does that mean that the same language is used in everyone's legislation priorities, or it's just that we're all in agreement?
All in agreement, and the core text does look the same, because we all kind of work together, but it won't be identical, because each locality may have a slightly different focus, but-
Okay. And the reason I ask is, you know, I feel that lines 282 to 297, I feel like we're sort of burying the lead there. Like, to me, those two paragraphs say so much in terms of the budget and how the state has not been funding local government as it should. So, you know, I don't know, again, you know, this doesn't have to be for this year, but, you know, I'm wondering for next year. I just think those two paragraphs are so telling, and they're sort of, you know, they're not highlighted anyway in this document, but to me, they really speak volumes about the challenges we face as local government officials. And then I did notice at the last line, 296, I don't know if that line needs to be updated. It is vital that the state avoid this approach to the current pandemic-related economic challenges. I don't know if that's something we had in there last year, or if it's still applicable.
The current economic challenges is probably more relevant now with striking pandemic-
Yeah, I think that's right.
One could consider some of the federal activities pandemic, it's just not medical-
Right. I think that's perfect, just take the pandemic-related out, yeah.
We can certainly strike that. It's, there's still some fallout, but it's not the-
Right. But again, I think those two paragraphs are just, you know, I think when people talk to us about, you know, taxes and all that, you know, and just trying to show them, this is part of the issue here, is our lack of funding in certain ways from the state. And then my last comment is, I know that we all feel, you know, a little bit apprehensive with the WAMADA funding and all that. And so looking at lines 388 through 390, I know you have it highlighted in gray, because it's, I guess, new, but I'm also wondering, you know, is that another, something else that, you know, we could bold, or I don't know, put in italics or something? But I know that is something that all of us up here do feel strongly about, is that WAMADA funding piece?
Yeah, I think that's why, based on council's input, I did highlight it in the at-the-glance summary, so it's right up there front. It does show up at line 389, which you referenced, the 297, and also 310. So it comes up in several places.
Okay, that's good.
Sort of cross-referencing it, depending on where you read.
Right, right. And I know in your conversations, I know that you, when you're actually in Richmond, I know that you're talking about this, so-
And that's one that even today, in working with MBTC and our Northern Virginia peers, we were working on what's happening with SJ 28 and what bills are going in. And there's definitely going to be bills, haven't seen them yet.
Right.
There's some big comprehensive ones that could be a big benefit to Northern Virginia in transit funding, and then some more targeted, so.
Okay.
We'll definitely be tracking that and have more for council.
Well, thank you very much for your work on this.
Ms. Flynn?
I just had one request, and that's, Ms. Mester, you did a nice job of explaining what's happening with the single-stair dwelling code change, but I would just ask at line 714 to 715 that it's clearer in the final version, where the grade language says this code change has been recommended for final adoption on December 11, 2025, with an effective date of 2027, that it's clear as to who's making that recommendation and which body, because I think a reader wouldn't necessarily understand that we, as a body, abstained from this issue pending the study or further, you know, building authority conversations that were happening this year. So whether it's like the state building authority, or whoever the body is, has recommended, you know, final adoption with those dates, so that it's clear in our own legislative program.
Certainly, we can add that is the state DHCD building code.
Great, thanks.
And there was a separate task force, I think, that studied it and then made the recommendation to DHCD, so. Okay, other questions or comments? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I couldn't agree more that I think you reflected our discussion last week, and a great deal of work. I want to go back to this single exit, and I know that there's some deal that may be cut in Richmond, but let me just read the position of the International Association of Firefighters and the Metro Fire Chiefs. The IAF and the Metro Chiefs recognize the following: Single means of egress places residents and firefighters in danger. Many fire departments lack the personnel and equipment required to combat these types of fires. Operations on ground or aerial ladders are hazardous for trained firefighters. Providing emergency responders access to only a single entryway for emergency operations negatively impacts rescue and fire suppression efforts. Many of these proposed multifamily dwellings serve our most vulnerable populations and place them at greater risk by degrading the standard of living and life safety. So I have to continue to express the strongest possible opposition to these proposals, even if some deal is cut in Richmond. I just wanted to put that on the record. And unless the fire service changes their view and is somehow persuaded, and somehow there are additional safety elements put in place, and I can't even imagine what they would be, that would offset the dangers, I just want to recount the concern that I have. That is expressed very clearly by the fire service here, after all, would be the people whose lives would be placed on the line to make rescues that might otherwise not have to be made. Thank you.
I think we all share the desire that we want our buildings to be safe for residents and first responders, and my understanding of the task force actually included fire professionals and first responders, I think, as part of the recommendation. So I don't think any deal was cut. There was a task force that the General Assembly referred this to. That task force came back with a recommendation to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and that board is taking that final vote in December.
Madam Mayor, I'm also aware of how these-
Email out the specific language-
Yeah, it'd be great to clarify that and let people know the process.
Document.
Because I think it would be unfair to say that there was deals cut when the General Assembly kind of made a recommendation to have this referred out to a task force of experts and professionals, who I think spent several sessions talking about it. And I think we just, you know, it'd be great to get output or minutes from that meeting to know what was discussed and what the final recommendation is, because again, I think we all agree that fire safety should not be compromised, and I trust that the experts in that task force, you know, are ensuring that buildings are safe for residents and first responders.
Madam Mayor, I also realize that process is a compromise process, and this is an issue that I don't think should be compromised. Thank you.
I will send out the language that's now in the staff report, that's before the December 11th meeting, so council can see the details. And in talking to our building official and our fire marshal, they're, we're involved in tracking it and giving their input. They're going to monitor it, because they have some concerns and want to make sure that the recommended changes does result in intended outcomes, similar to your conversations earlier with monitoring policy changes. But to the mayor's point, it was the stakeholder-involved task force that made the recommendation.
I just want to reiterate that the fact that the fire service may have been involved does not mean that the end result reflects the fire service views.
Ms. Mester, if you could just get details on how the process was, my, what I've heard from other delegates is that it was actually a unanimous vote from that task force, but let's get the details of how that process is, so we don't have out there that there was some backdoor dealing. Other comments?
I just want to add to that. It'd be good to know who was on that committee and who voted unanimously. And there was, I was told there were fire chiefs, and, you know, if they voted unanimously, like, let's have our fire safety folks talking to that fire chief who was involved to understand the whys. You know, as a mother of someone who's a firefighter, I share this concern, not only of the people who live there, but those who are fighting the fires as well. Did you have something else you want to say, or can I continue on the-
No, I was just trying to see if there's other comments, if you had one on that one.
Yeah, I have a couple more, but whenever.
Are there other comments on the Ledge Program?
Just one more, Madam Mayor. The addition of transportation funding under the federal, we're listing the federal priorities, so I think we ought to add transportation funding there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to reiterate the process of, you know, just to review how we approve our legislative package, however, it's not set in stone. We still haven't seen the legislative priorities from our state senator or state delegate, and compared ours to theirs. So this is an iterative, though we are, though I would suggest approving this tonight, I also want to make it clear that it's not a document that cannot be amended and continued to be refined based upon the feedback we receive from our other, from our representatives. And then just one note on line 97, that's the date for the school board approving it. You might just want to say it's anticipated they'll, I'd like for it to say it's anticipated they'll adopt it at their November 25 meeting, just so it's accurate. And that's it. Thank you.
Other comments on the Ledge Program? Looking this way, because I think we have covered everything this way. It's Conley and Ms. Underhill, no? Okay. So one suggestion, on the tax one, given that we've already expanded beyond land value tax or split tax authority, and I know we mentioned tiered tax as kind of one option. Another, I think, that we've heard concerns about, which I don't think we have a blighted issue, but DC and other places have a vacant property tax. I don't know whether we actually have that authority, but essentially that would encourage more productive use of land if there's vacant. If we had the ability to actually tax vacant land, or vacant buildings for that matter, that would be another, again, taxing mechanism that could encourage the same outcome. So I guess I would ask whether we're okay with inserting, that is another menu of things to be studied. Yeah, that would be fine with me.
That would be around line 143 on attachment one.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion then to adopt the legislative program for 2026?
Do we need to state with amendments to those two lines, line 97 and line 143? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve TR 25-41 with the amendments that have been discussed.
I'll second.
Because Snyder and then Underhill? Call roll.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Great, appreciate it. All right, thank you, Ms. Mester. We look forward to the General Assembly session. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the consent agenda. There's four items on consent, an appointment, and a couple of contracts. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent? If not, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Siskott on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for all of our business. Do we have any business not on the agenda or standing, regional committee or liaison reports? I mean, we got to a lot of comments earlier already. Ms. Flynn?
I just wanted to thank the staff at Aurora House. They did a yard sale on Saturday. It was part of the efforts to ensure- It was part of the efforts to ensure sustained programming and recreational activity funds in addition to the, you know, funding that the city puts towards Aurora House and the work of the Citizen Advisory Committee. And so it was really great to be able to attend that. And my, my initial, what I've initially heard is that it was a successful event, and, and a lot of people were able to take advantage of the many donated goods that were there. So, so thank you to Aurora House, the staff there, and the work of the house manager, in particular, for all the activities that they've been coming up with for the residents during the various breaks and over winter break as well. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Other council member comments or other things to note?
And I'm sorry, I don't have the exact dates in front of me, but the Human Services Advisory Council, we're beginning the, our grant process, or their grant process. And so I believe there's $86,000 worth of funds to give to local nonprofits who specifically benefit Falls Church City residents. And so I believe those applications are, I mean, we're just starting the process, and people can look at the website to get the exact date. I didn't have a chance to get, but I believe it's, it's in a few weeks from now, so there's plenty of time if nonprofits want to apply.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, are we ready to move to minutes then? Anyone have comments on the April 28, 2025 minutes? Is there a motion to adopt them? Anyone read them? It's okay to admit if you haven't.
Move to adopt them, and it's?
In the second.
Second.
Conley in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Minutes are adopted. Yes, Mr. He.
And, Mr. City Manager, were we going to ask about the Government Operations Committee meeting on Wednesday, just so we're clear what we're putting on the agenda?
Agenda's reviewing the strategic plan, strategic planning meeting.
The retreat.
From January 14.
We will post that agenda.
That was the idea, and I don't know if there's any other commentary on that in terms of, you know, people who are able to attend or not able to attend. But we would love to have the conversation with the GovOps Committee and start putting things in motion.
I believe two of us are in person, and Laura, you're phoning in. So we'll have quorum in person and full committee, including dialing.
Okay, thank you. Well, given that we're going to end before nine o'clock, do we want to cover schedule and we don't have to have an 8:30 meeting on Wednesday? Since it's, people are probably baking or brining. Okay, does anyone have a copy of the schedule? Okay.
So I will walk through a couple of key things on it. So GovOps Committee, just as we mentioned, that would be then at 9:00 AM on Wednesday morning. The December 1st meeting, so that's Monday after Thanksgiving, we'll have a joint session with the school board. It will be at Meridian High School in the library. It'll be a 6:00 PM start, and dinner will be provided. And the plan is to celebrate achievements of the school board and the city council and staff over the past year, and begin to look ahead towards FY '27 budget development. And so the schools do plan to have a detailed discussion about enrollment trends and what they're seeing. They'll be joined by Keith, Dr. Keith Waters from the, from the Stephen Fuller Foundation, and they'll also touch on some of the big cost drivers that they have. We will provide a review of cost drivers on the general government side as well. I'll provide an update on the West Falls project from a finance perspective and for a discussion of Phase Two, what the comprehensive agreement says about Phase Two, and, and those details. And then we'll have our revenue forecast for the coming year. And so that'll be David So's sort of first presentation to the city council and the school board, and he's been working hard on that with the finance staff on revenue forecast for the coming year. So that's the plan for the first. We do have a few work session items that are really there for the council to read ahead, and we're probably not going to discuss them during the meeting unless the council wants to. But they'd be there for a read ahead, and if you have any questions about them, maybe you could let me know, and we'll make sure that the final staff report addresses those questions for the meeting on December 8th.
Mr. Schutz, can I interrupt you for just a second? For the meeting with the school board, I know I used to ask this when I was on school board, and I asked you last year, is there a way that we can get the slide deck from the schools before the meeting? And they probably would like to get, I think I speak for all of us when it's sometimes hard to do, you know, digest it on the fly, having seen it live without being able to look at it in advance, so.
Yes, we very begrudgingly are sharing our secrets beforehand, so we do plan to post the decks on Wednesday.
Okay, great.
And that will include the revenue forecast. And, and so we look forward to that.
Okay, thank you.
I say begrudgingly because it used to be kind of fun to unveil it at the meeting, but nobody else, nobody liked that, so maybe not a good idea.
Wyatt, I thought there were two, like, tactical things we wanted to talk about with the school board, and I can't remember what they were. Maybe one of them was the traffic with cars.
One of them was kind of reviewing for people who were, you know, haven't been around the school bond referendum and how we all were able to finance the Meridian and, you know, helping partner with us that, you know, the reason why, yes, there is construction and there is traffic, but we wouldn't have had this beautiful high school had we not have the development to pay for it, you know, so. I know that was one, so.
Actually, parking, that was the other one. Parking changes at, with the metro parking lot changing. And I think Mary Beth, you did research that we actually have 40 more spaces post-development than we did pre-development.
That's what I found, yeah.
That needs to get talked about, right?
And we, we are having a meeting with WAMADA tomorrow with school staff, so we will have a report out from that discussion.
Okay, should be a great discussion and dinner.
I just, sorry if I missed this. For the budget guidance resolution on the 8th, so last year when we hosted the joint meeting, we had the, we had the joint meeting and then, you know, the school superintendent and school board chair sort of, am I thinking about this right? Were dismissed, so to speak, but like, we continued on with some conversation in a work session among city council as to what the budget guidance should look like. And so I guess I'm wondering at the schools, if it's sort of a more fulsome presentation, but then we don't sort of do a work session on the 8th, are you envisioning, are we going to sort of have that conversation and staff in real time are going to be making edits to the resolution so that we can actually adopt the resolution? Like, there's going to be on the schedule, no lag time between the conversation and the actual resolution?
It's a, it's a great kind of, it's a great point. So that, we could carve out time on, on the first to have that discussion. What we would typically have in the packet, the read ahead packet, is last year's budget guidance, just so you have that model. And then following the discussion on the revenue forecast, the council could discuss last year's and provide guidance to staff on what you'd like to see in the version that would be before you on December 8th.
I guess the only, I mean, the other option, if we are, if we know kind of the other things that are going to be on there on the 8th, is that on the 3rd, as part of the mayor's agenda meeting, that we potentially put on the agenda, that we're going to have a follow-up on the budget resolution guidance so that at least people can, in a meeting setting, get initial thoughts out there, and then maybe staff works to implement them by the 8th or, or something. I don't know how you want to handle it, but it does seem like we need to be prepared in thinking about, we're trying to have a conversation about this and finalize a document for a resolution at the same meeting otherwise.
That's what I would propose, if, if the revenue forecast is going to be released the Wednesday before, we all do our homework and we will do the pre-read, and so probably going into the first, if you have opinions on where the budget guidance should go, we should probably talk about it. I'm okay talking about it in front of the school board. I don't want them to be feeling surprised about where guidance is going to be. And so if we can have that conversation as part of the December 1st, while we're all together, whether they're at the table or not, I think it's actually healthy for them to hear our deliberations and.
And I, I think I'd like to go into that meeting, and we know what our student population looks like, we know what we funded in last year's budget. It would be great to, you know, Wyatt, if you and Terry have had a conversation about how we address that gap before we get there on Monday, so it's not uncomfortable or, you know, it's not something, it hadn't been contemplated already, a strategy on how to move forward with, you know, how do we assess that when we're deciding the budget? Because we clearly funded students that didn't come.
And I guess I'm just, right, I'm thinking two years ago, I don't know when it was, two or three years ago at this point, the 2023 budget meeting, when we had it at the high school. And I remember it because, you know, we had the election, I wasn't yet on council, but we went to the joint budget guidance meeting, and it was in the library, and so we were sort of spread out at the different tables. And I just want to make sure that if we're having a, a public meeting and then we have a discussion, that the, like, discussion is captured in terms of the cameras, like, on the meeting, as opposed to it being just more presentation-wise. So that's all, I just, the mechanics of it, I want us to be thinking about how that happens.
It is a good idea, though, that maybe if we can have the discussion, you know, after we hear the presentations, the cost drivers, the revenue forecast, we all kind of share opinions on what budget guidance should look like with the school board there, we don't have to dismiss them. And then maybe at December 3rd, at the mayor's meeting, if staff can come with, like, here's what we heard as, like, your five big talking points, we can say yes or no before the packet comes together. That might be a good opportunity.
On the public agenda for the mayor's meeting, so if anybody wants to listen in to the, you know, to be continued, then they can.
Yeah.
But I think that would work if, if that's where the council would like to do it. I might, if, since we have a little bit of time tonight, I can share kind of what I think some of the challenge is going to be. And I'll do it very concisely because we're not really ready for the full discussion. But what I think the finance staff are looking at is an overall revenue forecast of kind of about under 3%, that I think they're going to be about 2.9%.
This is even earlier than Wednesday, Wyatt.
Yeah, exactly. But so here's what sort of the difficulty is going to be. On the real estate side, the growth in assessed value is on the residential side. If you look around regionally, many of our regional peers are seeing a decrease in assessed value on the commercial side. And so we don't, we're, it's too early for us to make real projections on what commercial AV is going to be. I do have good news. We have a real estate assessor that I'm hopeful that we'll be able to hire soon, but that's generally the, you know, the assessor is the one who typically does the commercial valuations, and our existing staff do the residential. So we're a step ahead on our picture on what the residential AV is going to be. So if, if we were to hit that 2.9% overall revenue forecast, that will have a disproportionately high impact on the residential side. Generally, over 6% increase in AV on the residential side. So that, maybe just sort of file that away, I think that's going to be part of the discussion on the December 1st in terms of council thinking about guidance overall in the budget picture. I'll stop there.
So in terms of, let's not discuss the substantive part since it's not final, but in terms of like the process, we're saying, let's discuss guidance at December 1st joint meeting. December 3rd, mayor's meeting, staff can kind of reflect back what you heard as the top points from us, ideally with a draft potentially?
Yeah.
So that come December 8th, it's not a surprise to us what guidance might say. Okay, see, I don't, thank you.
Very good. Okay, so that's the December 1st meeting. We do have on December 3rd, that would be the Ask the Council meeting after the normal agenda meeting.
Can I add something, Mike?
Yeah.
Veronica has asked me if we could move the appointments committee to December 3rd at 8:00 PM, asking my, so that we will be done before we go on recess.
Ah, right.
Would that work for you, Mayor Hardy?
Likely yes, but if not, I can dial in.
Should be fine for me, so we'll have quorum.
Okay, so we will move that to December 3rd.
Okay, so then the last meeting of this term will have ceremonial items to kick the meeting off. Reception for incoming and outgoing council members, oath of office for incoming council members, recognition for outgoing council members, recognition of Renee for her longtime service on the electoral board. And we also will have the auditors present for the annual audit. So then the action items would include the EDA city council MOU, assuming that's ready, the tree canopy ordinance, the CPACE ordinance first reading, budget guidance resolution, plan amendments for the basic and police plan, second reading on the site plan and subdivision ordinance, and then the consent items that the council reviewed earlier tonight.
Questions or suggestions on this schedule?
We are working hard on the tree ordinance. I have sort of gotten some intimations. We're a little bit worried about our ability to hit that December 8th meeting. And I do want the council to know it is a priority. We're working hard on it, but if we were to look to sort of try to make that, that meeting a bit more manageable, that might be one where staff is going to be struggling to hit that deadline.
Okay.
So then, looking ahead, December 17th, new council orientation and a tour. We haven't put, Mary Beth will sort of follow up on a date for an additional one. Then the January 5th meeting is organizational meeting, election of mayor, election of vice mayor, adoption of rules of procedure, electronic participation, a work session on appointments, discussion on the rules of procedure for any changes desired, and council retreat planning of December, January 31st is the date that we have for the council retreat. I believe that everyone has reviewed that date and is okay with it, that's a Saturday. Then January 12th, we would start things off with the Chet Delong Award for Outstanding Service at the Mary Riley Stiles Library, adoption of council rules of procedure if there are changes to them, appointments for board and commission liaison, second reading on CPACE, work session on the sanitary sewer agreement with Fairfax County, work session on contracts, city council approval of contracts. January 26th, we had second reading planned on the tree canopy. That assumed that there was, there is a first reading on, on December 8th, second reading on the zoning code, technical cleanups, action on the sanitary sewer purchase agreement, and potential action on contract authorization. And looking, turning the page to February, we'd be looking to do the Tenor Hill rezonings in the month of February. There's a quick turnaround, so here's a, might be worth council thinking about. We have the retreat planned for January 31st. We would propose that we would have a discussion on council strategic priorities, then at the work session on February 24th, and again on March 2nd, and then action on council strategic priorities on March 9th. So having action completed on those prior to budget presentation at the end of the, on March 23rd.
Madam Mayor, I wondered if I could ask somewhere early in the year, the first quarter, a report on the Gordon Road Triangle, where we are with that, what discussions have occurred? Just generally, are we moving forward on the potential planning for that? Thank you.
Imagine that would be helpful input before we get together at the end of January so we can assess relative priority in the next two years.
What I would propose is, at a minimum, we have a written memo for the council to read ahead of a January 31st retreat, maybe with a roadmap on Gordon Road, and any details and any meetings and discussions that have occurred about. and any meetings and discussions that have occurred about it.
Sounds good. I know this is the nature of kind of January and February with the new council being seated, but right now the meetings look pretty light, especially in light of, you know, the comment earlier about how our meetings have gone long. I know that not everyone can do midnight. But is there anything, I guess, that we have, that we have agreement on that really should be scheduled in the January, February timeframe before we have a new strategic plan?
So in items to be scheduled, the stormwater fee credit program, and this council member Flynn brought that up earlier tonight. In my conversations with Jeff Peterson specifically, it's a little simpler than what I had envisioned it to be. What their, what his proposal is to increase the grant amount from the current, I think, 1,000, or maybe, I can't remember what the exact grant limit is, but to increase that to $3,000 as the grant size. And in his view, that's all that needs to be done. I had thought it was going to be more of a review of the whole criteria and how they're awarded and everything like that. And he indicated that's not what the problem is. So in that context, it's really kind of a budget amendment, I think, and a change to the, there might be another policy change to make that happen. And we can review that, but I think that's a simple action.
Yeah, that's what I had understood. I mean, I understood it as the, the grant size was not large enough to basically incentivize people to have to go through the, like, worksheet or whatever that was associated with it. And so.
I guess as part of it, I would like to see benchmarking with, like, other stormwater fee credits. And, you know, should we give, is it just like cisterns and pervious driveways? Are there other things that we could incent? So maybe just a look in general. I don't want to scope creep because you're trying to make it manageable in January and February, but it's probably been over 10 years since we've adopted this. It's probably worth a look at all those things if we're going to revamp it.
Yeah. It would just, right, it would just be good to have it, yeah, timing wise, done going into the next budget cycle and issuance of whatever people need, you know, the credit on their fees.
Maybe one other thing, the planning staff are working right now to develop kind of their ideas on priorities for the coming short term and longer term. And we could have a work session with the city council to touch base with you prior to retreat on that. There's some heavy policy issues that are on our near-term picture, including, well, I won't go through the list, but we could have a work session to discuss about that.
Yeah. Likewise, I know the planning commission does their advance as well, where they plan out things. And so, and I know many of our boards and commissions also plan out their goals for the year. So I guess if you're leads on to one of those, those would be good inputs to bring into the conversation. But I was just looking at the schedule of January and February. I hate for those sessions to be wasted. So I guess I would ask, Wyatt, beyond what the planning team might be looking for, is if there are other minor things in our backlog that we can pencil in? Because right now, early February just looks like the Tenner Hill rezonings.
I just had one other question. And this is, I think it would have come up in the sanitary sewer purchase agreement conversations if they were sooner. And so I was just wondering, do you have an update on, you are the person exercising authority as to whatever is happening with the Quinn development and anything getting rechanneled to Arlington versus staying in the Fairfax County sewer shed? And so have there, like, what is the timing of that? Have determinations been made? Just, just to have a sense of that in, like, before January 12th?
Yeah, I can provide a written update on that. But verbally, what we have relayed to the Quinn development is to not do the forced main and the pump station over to Arlington, but instead have a gravity system, given the changes in Fairfax County's posture. The policy basis behind that is that the city has always had a gravity system that is the most cost-effective system. And the only reason we were considering the pump option is because of the constraints, you know, through the purchase agreement. So that's my verbal report, but we'll give a fuller report to the council when this item is before you.
If you could just, at the same time as you do that, pull, like, pull the VCs, because I don't remember exactly how the monetary aspect of it worked and, you know, there was a contribution or they were going to be covering the cost or how that affects, if there is an offset in any sort of way that we need to be aware of. But that would just be helpful to know, in terms of that determination, how it's made and are there follow-up items or there are no follow-up items?
We could certainly give that update and very concisely. They're going to pay just over $2 million in availability fees. They were going to get a credit for the cost of the forced main over to Arlington County from that fee amount. So if they don't build that forced main, that $2 million goes straight to the city's coffers to be able to be used for the purchase of additional capacity from Fairfax County.
Any final scheduling things? Okay, let's cancel the mayor's meeting on Wednesday then, since we took care of it now. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn. Okay. Good night all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, council.